Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd ask you all to please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like to point out the exits, which are behind us and behind the audience as well. First order of business is public comments. Public may address the board at the times indicated on the agenda with the first opportunity being early in the meeting and the second opportunity later in the meeting. Each person is asked to speak into the microphone and identify him or herself. There is only one microphone this evening, and we apologize for that, but that's what was available for tonight, and that is on that table in the front. Speakers are asked to limit comments to three minutes. The public comment period will have a 30-minute time allocation, and we would ask that if the 30-minute mark is being reached, then comments be held until the final comment period. Please remember, there is no cross-discussing between persons or the board. Each speaker may address the board once during each comment period. Thank you. If anybody would like to speak at this time, we would ask you to come forward, state your name, and use the microphone up front.
Last thing. Hello, my name is Ken. I am a Cornwall resident and a Cornwall Central School District alumni, as are my children.
Ken, can I ask you to please state your last name as well?
Sure, Wojciechowski.
Thank you.
I'm actually a teacher in another district, and even though I don't have children that are currently in the Cornwall Central School District anymore, I still keep up with what's going on. After hearing about what the nurses spoke of during the last board meeting, I was very surprised to hear that they are in the lower half of the county's average salary scale for school nurses. I also didn't realize that they were separate from the teachers' contracts because many districts actually have combined contracts between teachers and nurses. Nurses work equally as hard as teachers do. They are educated. They work longer hours and don't have a prep time or a set lunch break. They never know how many students they will see in any given day or what they will see, and their job has a great amount of liability attached to it. I was shocked to hear that they lost 22 steps in one contract. When my children were in school, we depended on our nurses just as much as we did their teachers. As someone with high expectations for our district, I would expect Cornwall to have the most educated and experienced nurses in our county. Hearing that the new hires will have their earnings potentially drastically lower than the nurses who are grandfathered in makes me think that this district won't be able to hire or retain quality nurses in the future. This is a great concern. I would have stated all this information and concern before COVID-19 outbreak, and now I can't imagine how much more the nurses have on their plates since COVID began. I am baffled why the district is making them fight so hard just to get a fair contract. Nurses deserve the utmost respect, and they most certainly deserve to be compensated fairly. I've seen the central administration salaries of other districts in Orange County, including the larger districts, and Cornwall's central administration salaries are on par with those larger districts. What I don't understand is why these nurses have had to fight so hard and for so long when it appears that the district absolutely has the ability to compensate them fairly. I feel that it is time that the district corrects their mistakes and provides their nurses with the fair contract that they deserve. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kim Wojciechowski. I'm also speaking in regards to the nurses, on behalf of the nurses, and I'm reading this letter on behalf of a Cornwall parent. My son is a newly diagnosed type 1 diabetic. I'm not sure if you know what that entails, but it pretty much means that I am my son's pancreas. When he needs to eat, when he's stressed, when he's hot, when he's cold, or any other number of things that affect humans physiologically, I must monitor him and be prepared to intervene and rescue him. If I drop the ball, it could mean organ failure, unconsciousness, or worse, even death. Likewise, the school nurses are my son's pancreas while he is at school. They have to constantly monitor him and provide rescue or insulin as his body needs it, daily, frequently, urgently. His blood sugar can drop at a moment's notice, which means the school nurse needs to juggle everything she's already doing and attend to my son immediately. At the beginning of this school year, I was in the nurse's office while my son was transitioning to an insulin pump. While having this critical conversation with the nurse, I saw two excellent nurses attend to a student who vomited in his mask, a student with a backache, four students who needed new masks because theirs were broken, and I'm sure full of saliva, two sick students, and one student with a large knot on his forehead, all in a span of 30 minutes. Our nurses do not get paid enough. They have no scheduled lunch breaks. They rarely have time for bathroom breaks. They are constantly on call all day. Phoning parents, documenting essential data, attending to first aid needs, being essential life support for my son. These nurses need proper compensation. It is imperative that the Cornwall Central School District not only retain the competent and highly educated nurses they already have, but attract new staff that will continue to provide the highest quality of care and attention to our children. Providing fair compensation to these well-deserved medical professionals is one way to ensure that this becomes a reality. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Cruz. My name is Tara Cruz, and my son is a Cornwall Elementary student here. Pardon me, I hate public speaking. The school policy does not provide nurses for any -- oh, hold on. It's going to have to be this way. The school policy does not provide nurses for any after-school programs organized through the PTO, even when held on school premises, that my son needs to participate. I sit through every drama rehearsal, every recital, every sporting event and practice, every after-school activity to provide supervision and care for my son with no help provided by this district. On last Wednesday morning, January the 5th, 10 minutes before my son is to get up and get on the bus, we receive a phone call from Cornwall Elementary informing us that they have failed to provide a nurse for that day, and my son would not be, quote, "allowed to attend school." We were told to contact the superintendent, Terry Dade, since it was a district-level decision, and we called him immediately. Mr. Dade was highly dismissive of our needs for the school to provide a nurse. That is in direct opposition to my son's IEP health plan and ADA rights. Mr. Dade's response was, quote, "I will have my attorney prepare a statement." That's exactly the kind of care and concern that we received from our superintendent on the day that he didn't allow my son to attend school due to his failure to provide the essential staff at Cornwall Elementary. No apologies, no solutions, no understanding. He was completely dismissive. Mr. Dade allowed the largest elementary school in our district to go without the presence of a medically trained and licensed nurse. He allowed the substitute nurse to go to Cornwall and Hudson instead of Cornwall Elementary. He did not shift the nurse from Willow or any other nurse in the district to provide the required staff needed for my son to attend elementary school that day. When I offered to provide care and supervise my son during school that day, due to their inability to provide required staff, I was told no. My son was the only child in the district that was contacted and told that he could not and would not be allowed to attend school that day. All other children with allergies, asthma, or medical needs were in attendance that day, but not my son. Discriminatory and illegal, absolutely. A huge disappointment in the leadership of our school district, absolutely. Why can we not provide required staff in the district for our students? There is no float nurse in this district, as there are in so many others. My son literally was jerked around on Wednesday as a direct result of the poor decision-making and failure to provide required services. My son asked me on Thursday if he would be allowed to attend school that day. Terry Dade needs to be held accountable for his dismissive behavior and poor decisions making as a superintendent of our school. Why were my sons not made of importance? Why did they not matter that day? This is absolutely ridiculous.
Good evening. My name is Linda Line. I wonder if the board knows, and parents know, that Mr. Dade posted a video of himself on social media singing a song to announce the snow day for Friday. In this song, he said that we had complained that we needed a break or we would die. And he also said that nothing he does is ever good enough. He also has, in the past, posted a picture of himself doing shots of Jack Daniels. And he posted a picture of a child, maybe his child, opening a door in one of his cabinets full of hard liquor, saying that taint, nothing safe in this house. I wonder if the board thinks that this professional behavior of our superintendent, the leader of our school district?
Hi, my name is Christine Cleaves. I'm a teacher and a taxpayer here in the Cornwall Central School District. During this very difficult time, we have heard over and over again we are on the front lines coming face-to-face with this virus. We have many colleagues who could not be here this evening because they are quarantining. While we risked our health and that of our families, we would like an explanation as to why the district office was locked up tight. No one was allowed in. In fact, a basket was placed outside of the building to collect whatever you were dropping off. We are happy that you were all able to keep yourselves safe. But however, who was keeping us safe? Who was providing us with the PPE we needed to safeguard ourselves? I couldn't help but to feel resentment towards those who have the responsibility to safeguard my health and the health of my students. With that being said, I must also speak on behalf of our retirees and on our health insurance. Most who retire right now, when they become eligible, they cannot afford the health insurance premiums, which our district, one of only two in the county, that has a premium so high that it cuts deeply into their pension benefits, contrary to the sweet deals that the district office has negotiated for themselves, not just in retirement, but now as well. We would like to know what makes all of you more important than all of us. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is going to be old business. It's going to be discussion on the proposed capital project. And Terry and Harvey, and I know Larry, and we also have several members of the board who are on the Facilities Committee as well. So go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, so tonight's meeting is really important for the board as it's our time to have a discussion, ask questions, get any clarity with regards to three different topics for tonight. First, you have in front of you the Facilities Committee's recommendation to the Board of Education with regards to the finalized scope of the capital project that will go up for vote in May. Second point of discussion would be around the number of propositions. It has not been decided. It's this board's responsibility to determine whether we have one proposition that would include all the five buildings, our elementary school buildings, our middle school, our high school, along with the athletic complex, all into one proposition. The other decision that the board could make would be to separate the two pieces into two separate propositions. You all are familiar with both, if you know the history of Cornwall and the bond votes. The third piece and the final piece that we would like the board to discuss, ask questions, and the like is around our recommendation to have another capital reserve on the docket for the May vote. Amount to be determined by the board, but it was very successful this go-around to utilize the capital reserve to fully fund our proposed capital project, that we would go ahead and do that again. So those are the three topic areas. One, the finalized recommendation from the Facilities Committee. One proposition versus two. And then putting a capital reserve vote up for May. Harvey, I don't know if I missed anything on those three points?
Nope, that covers them.
All right, so I would turn it over to Larry, who was our esteemed leader in the Facilities Committee, just to get us started.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the individuals who participated in these recommendations that are before the board. Dave Conroy, Tom Mulfield, Jeannie Rose, Richard Schaffner, Jennifer Simons, Kate Palumbo, Lynn Fern, Brendan Carty, Dave Moretto, Jim Kriegen, Louis Argenio, Nancy Bryan, Terry Dade, Harvey, Walter Moran, and representatives from Tetra Tech and the Palumbo Group. This group met over four months. We participated in eight meetings and had over 16 hours of information gathering and deliberations. And so I want to thank them all for their diligence, their persistence, and their hard work. The recommendations you see before you are a culmination of all those four months of work with the consensus of the committee came up with this. The larger spreadsheet shows how the priorities have been laid out. Priority one is the recommendations that you're seeing before you. Priority two, we are recommending for the next phase, another bond. And so we are planning going out. And there's one column labeled "district" that is to be done in-house. So if we take a look at the smaller sheet, I guess I'll ask questions. These alls have been sent to you ahead of time, so you've had a chance to look at these and come up with questions. Please understand that these were not decided lightly. We had a lot of input from the architects, from our construction manager, from Walter. Walter was a primary source. He's the one who knows these buildings inside out and backwards. So I'd like to discuss that before we discuss the athletic facility. So if there's anything, any questions?
Just a point of information, Larry, to the rest of the board. I know you guys are all aware of how many times the committee met, but I don't recall ever a committee meeting as many times as this committee did. Larry, how many meetings?
It was a total of eight meetings over four months.
Over four months, so it was quite intense. And every time, there was whittling down of things and priorities being made and things along those lines. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
So I have one, just me behind the mask.
Yeah, you.
When it comes to all of the -- I mean, again, all of the work that I know you guys all put in and the fact that there are now, you know, so many items that were going to be done using the capital project money, but then also, you know, district being able to take over a bunch of the elements. The future project, the stuff that goes into future project, that's the timeline is determined by raising funds in another capital project, right?
Harvey, can you go over kind of some of the funding of the shorter term and then the longer-term funding that could be available?
So the future project column is not one that should be thought of as 10, 15 years down the road. I think what we've really done is we've been able to capture what I would say is a continuous flow of improvement to the facilities. So once this project is done and underway, we will have already put in motion for the next I don't want to call it a phase, but it would be the next phase of capital. So where are we going to get this paid from? Again, I think the public spoke, the committee spoke very loudly with respect to the two previous bonds that failed with regards to the impact it would have on the tax rate. This one, as well as future ones, we're looking to do in such a manner that it would not impact the tax rate. So how do we do that? One is, as Terry indicated, we're looking to reestablish another capital reserve, okay? Based on our aid ratio right now, if we're able to fully fund that, let's say 5 million again, that gives us the ability to do 20 million worth of work, okay? So there's one bucket. Another bucket is the high school bond. The high school bond would be paid off in approximately 2029, okay? So it's a short period of time relative to when this project starts going. It does take some lead time to get everything in order, so there won't be a long wait for that. Those two things are very key. Additionally, we're going to be able to do, as part of the regular budget, as we do every year, we have a transfer to capital line that is approximately $350,000, $355,000. Not a lot of money, but we can make good use of that on a lot of these smaller pieces, and it's really more of a whittling down on those. So that's pretty much how we get there.
Great, thank you. I also wanted to commend everybody on, you know, all the work in going through this using the five-year plan and the building condition survey to be able to then work with the district and all of those additional in-house people that have been hired to really reduce the amount of money it's going to cost, the ones that we can do in-house, right? There are fewer incidentals, and we don't have to hire out because we have those people in-house, the carpenter and the plumbers and things like that. So I just wanted to make sure we pointed out that that's, you know, former tax money going toward those new hires that are now being utilized to their maximum potential. So thank you for all your work on this. It's really great.
I'll jump in real quick, Margaret, on what you were saying with doing things in-house. You know, we've said it a couple times, it's going around, the prevailing wage rate. All the work, because this is publicly funded projects, the monies have to be we have to use prevailing wage rates, which is essentially a union scale, which is, you know, a higher wage rate. So any of the items performed in-house by Walter and his team is certainly at our cost for them and the materials. So it's a substantial savings therein.
And just to add to that, even if we used local contractors who would normally charge us a much less rate, because that's what they charge, they still have to charge us prevailing wage. And that's a very sad thing, but that's just the way New York State works.
Yes, I have to say, as being on a board that built a brand-new high school years ago, put an addition on a middle school, and improved so many of the buildings, I was never presented with anything as complete and forward-thinking as these documents. So that's the first thing I want to say, the committee and everyone, and Harvey, really. It's something that you need to do when you have a home. And this kind of thinking, because I was, our buildings, a lot of our buildings do need quite a bit of work. And having this plan is really something that the public, and I believe the staff, should really get behind because it's like having a house. and I believe the staff, should really get behind, because it's it's like having a house that really needs work and you haven't been taking care of it through nobody's fault. That's the first thing. The second thing I have to ask is, you've got a 10% built-in increase for extra, 10% over when you on here, I see, which you should. It's like if I order tile, I always order you order 10% more because you need to have that edge. If in fact, we're estimating an additional 10%, now, given the fact that pricing is increasing, it's a double-edged sword, but let's just say on the nice side of that sword, we don't use that. Does that go back, will that go back into a new fund, a new capital project fund, if we have that overage? I mean, that's a big order considering everything's increasing, but is that if, in a perfect world, is that what would happen to that money?
Basically, yes. And the way that you you like to get as much work done initially, so the way that you typically accommodate that is you have alternates within the contracts that you spec out. So a contractor may, you know, bid on doing the roof, and maybe we need another part of the roof done, that's an alternate. If that main roof comes in under budget, we can do the alternate. So it's kind of like having like a backup list, and this gives us the ability to just, you know.
But in essence, it would come off that five-year plan then, because that would that backup roof would be something we'd need to do in the future.
Exactly.
So that money would, it it just basically goes back to.
Correct.
Okay. Let me see, I think that that was my main question. Thank you.
Yeah, so to piggyback on what I've heard others say, I, the facilities committee, thank you, board members, for participating in that, as well as the the public. I that it's a heavy lift, and I really appreciate you whittling down what you're confronted with with that five-year survey and coming to your best guess on on what should happen going forward. I I have some questions, not on the actual specific items, but the costs, kind of piggybacking on what Teresa said about the overruns. I noticed incidentals were 20% in this. And I I I couldn't find another district that actually had such a high number. Why, why, and I'll give you, for instance, Warwick, who just recently passed one last year, their incidental rate was, I think, only 13%. What what's so special about Cornwall that we're at 20%, which it's a big dollar, right? And so I I've seen a lot of the the videos on YouTube, but I don't think that was ever covered. And if it was, I apologize, I almost have missed it. What what what's that 20% made of? It seems really high.
I can speak toward that. I can't speak toward Warwick, but I will say that that what's included in there is project-specific, if they had, depending on what they were doing, the 20% is pretty much standard. So just so you know, it covers a host of things, including the following: the architects, the engineers, all preliminary testing, insurance, legal fees, interest you may have to float on some bands. All that is included in that kind of figure. Warwick's project may not have required or needed a lot of those costs, depending on what it was.
There, you know, not to compare us to Warwick, I think we're a lot better, just for the record. But but their number was 13. And and why I kind of focused on Warwick is, they also tried to float the idea of we're going to do a capital plan and not cost the taxpayer anything, and that failed. That was in, I think, 2019, before the pandemic started. And it failed for a lot of reasons, and I don't want to get into that. But their incidental costs, even back then, I believe, were not even close to 20%. So I I I understand we have cost escalations built in, and we have design-construction costs that obviously have to be incurred, but when you factor all that in, that 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 number approaches like 40% of our overall cost.
So from a
And I just want, just to complete the thought, is that strikes me as rather high, even in a COVID era where we know that prices have just gone kind of to the roof, especially for for construction items, right, Louis? I mean, it's really hard to, one, source it, and two, the cost just go. So help me understand how that is.
Again, I just, you know, what I'll just reiterate.
Is there a way to break that down specifically, then, in those items that you just described?
Well, not entirely.
Isn't isn't the the 20, the nine, and the 10 generated from Tetra Tech? It wasn't that we generated it and decided that that's our number?
Right.
And and I thought we, I thought they, that was brought up in the meeting.
Yes.
And I believe SED mandates a percentage, maybe based on the style of project or the or the or what you're investing in. I think the SED is mandating 20, 9, and 10.
Oh, so those numbers are a plug?
Those numbers are obligated to apply.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, that's right.
And so whether whether we achieve those numbers or not remains to be seen.
Correct.
Similar to what you were saying to Teresa.
And they could go higher. They could be higher. We could blow the budget.
Well, some things we can't control, right? How much we pay the architects and the like, hopefully, right?
Right, but testing, for instance, you know, you don't know what you're going to run into. You may open up a wall and you have a host of asbestos. Now you've got to do a host of testing, those kind of things.
You know, as as Teresa questioned, if we don't use 20%, we will have alternates built into the budget so that it will.
Right, the the risk of going high, I mean, you could either, you can either, you can either put aside too much, too little, or be right on target. And I think the risk for putting aside too little in the incidentals is is much higher. But there was a, Larry, what was the district that went over and actually had to go back to their voters to ask for more money to cover the capital project?
It's a local district.
Yeah.
And Chester did years ago. They lost the whole project.
This is definitely on the buffet of options for, you know, how things could go. If you if you budget too low, you may have to come back with your hat in your hands a couple of years later.
I would say the time to sharpen your pencil is not when you're doing the budget, right? It's when you're actually kind of confronted with the expenses and how you're going to manage it, right? It's it's, budget should be somewhat conservative in its construct.
Well, Harvey.
So but just for the record, it is, these percentages are dictated to us by the state. We have no control over.
I can double-check that with the architects. I know that SED does require certain percentages. Are these the actual percentages? I have to check with them. What I can tell you is that at the meeting, at one of the facilities meeting, the architects and the project manager did indicate that these number, this 20% is actually on the low end.
Of the range that maybe is mandated?
Of the range that they feel is it should be.
Okay.
In today's environment.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. I just want to reiterate that it was asked at two or three different facilities meetings from two or three different people, and both the architects, Tetra Tech and Palumbo Group, both said, you know, this is what we really see. And, you know, I think the point that that Harvey made to Teresa's question of, we'll build on those incidentals. So if we come out on the right end, we'll get some more work done and get ahead of the next phase, which would be a benefit. But, yeah, it was definitely asked multiple times by multiple people, and the architects said, you got to have this, yeah. And if anything, they they said that they would make it higher.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Good. I I also, I I also think that we have to be prepared, because we're working with older buildings, that sometimes when you work on one problem, as you were saying, another one arises. It's like uncovering, you know, uncovering an onion. It's just layers. And these, some of these buildings are extremely old. So that 20%, hopefully, it'll be, it'll be enough. But as I said, it's better to be prepared on the oversight. Thank you.
In in looking at these, you can see that a lot of them are directly related to health and safety for both our our staff and our students. In this building, we're talking about replacing all the cabinetry. It's old, the kids can pinch their fingers in it. They're, you know, so that it's a, and across the board, all five buildings.
Now, I would add, Larry, and only because we're, we become practice at this through some of the communication events, but one of the bigger items that that's on there that I think is worthy of pointing out, the middle school and all three elementary schools get completely refurbished bathrooms, the hard-to-get-to plumbing, not just putting on new faucets. But I know that these are, these are issues that a whole generation plus of parents have been concerned about, and they're all being taken care of with this one capital project.
When it says 200 feet of sewer line replacement, is that sewer line replacement out to the road where it meets, it meets the, I'm sorry, on Cornwall Elementary, where it has, it's just piggybacking on what you've just said. This is a little different because they're talking about in this particular building, they need to have the sewer line, 200 feet of sewer line. Is that part of public property that it's got to meet up with?
That's that's on our property.
It's on our property.
We have a situation here where some of the pipes, the drainage, collapsing, they're going under the building. It's extremely difficult to do that. We've come up with a, Walter came up with a fabulous plan, whereas based on the fact that the bathroom's on the back end of the building, we'll just run a new sewer line right through the back of the building. It's actually probably cheaper and economical that way.
So we we're not going to be responsible for doing anything in a public road?
No, this is all on our property.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I just wanted to point out that this isn't something that you guys just sat down and said, oh, let's try this, let's try this, that the architects, you know, the building condition survey that the state does every five years for, you know, for the district, five years, three years, five years? You know, the architects, they come in and they look at this stuff and they say, this is not up to code. This is an issue, like the state, which is what gave us the rating for a couple of the the schools that were unsatisfactory, right? So we need to fix those things, those are essential that are fixed. Again, the fact that so much of this is going to be able to be covered by this capital project amount is is just great to see. It really is.
So Larry, you you mentioned safety. And I noticed that we have a number of things that were added at your last meeting, right? Called future projects, where they're where they're thought of being deferred. I think Walter provided a solution to address some of the the needs that would be not part of this actual capital raise, but but done separately. The the, it seems to me that when I, for for capital projects, right, there there's like four components to a typical capital project, at least from what I've been able to research. Those are typically, you know, building infrastructure. Two is is athletics, because that's another big spend. Three is of what I would call safety, like, you know, the vestibules and rejiggering things. And the fourth always goes down to, you know, modernizing the instructional environment, right, to conduct 21st century. I mean, at least, but but it seems that that we're focused here on parts, I guess, one and two, the 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 building need and the the athletic upgrade. What about the other two components of a typical capital initiative, which, just to restate, would be the safety issue of of the cap, of the vestibule stuff and hardening your site, as well as the the 21st century thing? Where does that fall into?
The the vestibules, we are still waiting on, we have, help me.
We have approximately $250,000 in grants from the state.
I just went.
That we're just waiting on approval. DASNE, state education department has approved it, which is usually the biggest hurdle. Fortunately, the legislature and the budget department, there's many different agencies that has to go through. We have our contact, we call, they just say it's in process. We have, they don't even give you a phone number. You have to do it through email. They
Yeah, and that that will take care of new vestibules for the four, for the buildings. And in the high school, it will upgrade some of the safety features there. So that is looked at and being taken care of.
This is, this is, I mean, if you go back to the building condition survey, everything from restoring masonry wall, baseboards, HVAC, those are all identified by BCSS, critical safety needs.
Right, no, no, no.
So that all goes in that other bucket. That doesn't come out of the safety piece with capital project. Those are all critical safety needs in the district. So that would, that would really well come, cover that safety component.
I understand what you're saying, but in terms of a a a big picture, what are we doing to improve the district, right? The fact that the vestibule and that grant, it's still outstanding, but it's, the grant covers those upgrades, right?
Yes.
And we can't lever the the grant money into a, because we only get paid once, right, by the state. They're not going to pay us twice for for the same project, right, unfortunately. I I think having some type of a comprehensive, big-picture view for the public to see all the things that we're trying to do would be helpful, because I think what's happened here is very, very good. But the view of it right now is somewhat, in my view, as I'm trying to understand everything of where we're going, is a little bit maybe too myopic. And if there are going to be follow-ons, like I heard Harvey mention, right, we we have opportunities because of debt rolling off going forward, you know, debt service schedules and the like, that that having a a broader, not just this is what we're doing this year, but over a five-year period, what it looks like and and what the 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 priorities are in that context, I think would go a long way in eliciting real support throughout the community on that.
And I certainly don't disagree with you. We approached this
I'm not, I'm not.
as a pure facilities.
No, that I get. But as we move forward closer to getting to a an actual vote over the next, you know, we we, I think it's time to, you've you've done the little building blocks, but now it's time to see kind of like the forest, right? This is a tree now, or a couple of trees, maybe, better analogy.
There's whole forest sitting here.
Can I speak to that, John?
But, yeah, sure.
Because I think this is falling under what the communication committee will be doing, part of what the committee will be doing in the spring, well, starting now through the spring, which is to talk about this larger vision that that you're mentioning. And this is something that we've we've talked about at at different events and meetings, where we want the community to look at this capital project as one piece, a very big piece, in a larger effort to hit all of these buckets over the next period of time, let's say, five to 10 years.
Right.
So there's, you know, we have this capital project, but we also have the work that we're doing in-house. We also have, if we do set up a capital reserve fund, immediately planning for the next capital project. We have grant money that is already on the way. So if we put out everything that, all of the needs that we have, if we identify a path to get to each one of those, that's what we would consider success. This this individual capital project is the largest piece of that, but it's certainly not the only one, because we don't want people to to get the impression that all we're doing is A, B, C, D, E, F, G, et cetera. We're covering everything, we're just taking different routes to them.
Exactly, and actually having that charted
Right.
ahead of time, definitely before a vote, I think, is critical.
And what I
Because I think to prevent cynicism from entering the table is that, hey, you had $22 million, and this is how you figured out how to spend it, would be the wrong impression for the public to have.
And my sense
And the way to defeat that cynicism, I think, is by saying, these are the needs, and this is how we get there. You know, this is just phase one of a multi-phase or multi-year effort to to revamp and and retrofit the the district's building as well as its infrastructure.
And part of that infrastructure is the instructional infrastructure, is what you're talking about.
Exactly, and that's the part that we don't see here, that I'm
Correct. And and I know that Megan is working on that. So we will pull that all together, and I think a lot of that will come out in the, as we begin to build our budget and we start talking about the direction that's all going to go in. So I think
Well, that's
I don't want to, you know, speak for you.
Yeah. I want to stay focused on just capital, not 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 budget stuff, but but capital.
Well, no, understood, but in the budget discussion, we're not going to be able to do it all in the budget. So that in that, in the instructional discussion, as we're going through the budget, we may find pieces that we say, hey, we can't do that within our own budget, that has to be done in a capital budget and and a capital project. done in a capital budget and, and a, and a capital project, and then we can work, put that in this next project we were talking about. So I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think you're, you're, you're spot on. And I think we are going to do that. And I think Brendan understands that also. So I think as a, as a district and as a, a working collaborative group here, that will all come out, the pieces that use a steam lab, for instance. If, if it's in, in discussion, it says, hey, we need a steam lab and A, B, C, then we have to work that into the next capital project. But it, and laid out over the next three to five years, you know, as, as you had said, we may not be able to pull a steam lab out of our, out of our regular operating budget, but we certainly can plan for it over the next couple of years, in the next.
Well, we'll, we'll plan for it today and determine when over the next couple of years to, to, to execute is, is, I think, the real task ahead of us.
Right.
Because absent, absent that, then this just becomes a, a one-off kind of issue, and there's, there's no synergy and, and, and comprehensive, long-term plan associated with what we're doing.
And then, John, also just to remember that this was our discussion tonight, that's the purpose, this is the big part of this meeting. And then, the next meeting is when the board makes their decision and votes, okay? And then, once the board has made that decision and has voted on how this is going to go, then that's when the whole presentation to all different factions of the public will take place.
Okay, that's fair.
And then, also, just to speak to the DASNY grant, it's really even hard getting an answer from anybody. I tried, I didn't really get an answer, but this has been going on since 2019, Harvey? Yeah, 2019. That the money now is just like, it's, it's there, but they're not releasing it. And that's New York State. And so it, it's a shame, because, was that awarded by Senator Larkin?
Part of it.
Yeah, part of it was awarded by Senator Larkin.
That's right.
So that's how long this has been going on. And it's a shame that that has not been released, because the plans are set, like Harvey said, SED is usually the big holdup, and they're not. Everything is, we're ready to go, but the state won't release that money. And that's a shame, because it's there. So this is kind of where we are with, with the DASNY funds on that.
I, I attended, as a community member, I sat in the audience, one of the committee presentations that Brendan and Terry and Harvey were at. And basically, you covered a, a, really, a, a large swath of the plan. Not, not the meat and potatoes, not the specifics. I mean, there were specifics about what we were going to be doing, but certainly that there was a plan involved, that this was the beginning. So I think, in answer to some of what you were discussing, John, I think the committee has already started to do that, and certainly these meetings, these public meetings that you've been holding, they were, they were not just specific to this, to this budget, this capital project, but to the whole plan. So I think that's already been laid, that, that foundation, and I think you've done it well, so, at this point.
John, I just want to echo your sentiment, right? I think you're absolutely spot on, that this needs to be communicated as part of a larger project. And I believe, Terry, that you laid out, when you presented to us in maybe October as a, as a board here, and you had a PowerPoint up here, some of those next funding steps, so. But I think certainly, being mindful of that, and making sure that we communicate that to the public is vital. Because I think, you know, and I'm new to this board this year, being a community member for the last proposals that failed, I think there was a view, obviously, in the community that it was reactive and not planning ahead, and not part of a project. So this district has listened and said, you're, you know, we're going to go ahead and implement this capital reserve, which now allows us to take a big bite out of what we need to do without raising taxes, which is great. But we certainly need to make sure that we keep that momentum going and, and, and present that. So I think you're right to raise, I don't think any, I don't think you're disagreeing with anybody, just to, to bring it to the forefront of, let's keep that in, in everybody's mind.
This is a very important piece, I think, to that whole puzzle. And once it's, I think, put together, I, I would hope it sells itself, is, is the bottom line, but, but that's why we got to put the puzzle together, I think.
And I'd just like to jump in as a, a member of the Communications Committee with other people on the board and members of the public. We've been working in tandem with the Facilities Committee as we go forward with this to make certain that, you know, as, you know, once we get past the stage of, of the board approving this at our next meeting, that there's a way to, you know, put it out there and, and explain it and, and highlight how it works and really make it a very user-friendly sort of communication.
One of the other pieces that we really wanted to make sure the board had a chance to discuss, ask questions, is the thought around one proposition versus two. Just our team's thoughts, but we really could go either way, whatever the board decides we are absolutely okay with. Just based on our, our listening in on Facilities Committee meetings and the feedback, is that we should move forward with one proposition. This is our community, this is our collective thought of how we utilize this, this funding in a strategic manner that really covers as many components as possible. There were things that came off of the list to add some things, so this, this isn't about athletics versus our five schools. This was all thought as a comprehensive plan, so that's, that's our thought. But we definitely wanted to make sure that the board had a chance to discuss, ask any questions of Harvey and our team that you might have as well.
So Larry, is that our segue into the other part that you wanted to talk about, which was the athletic fields?
Sure is. Sure is. Which actually, you know, when I'm sitting here thinking about it, one of the pieces that came out during the Facilities Meetings and discussion of an athletic facility is the instructional aspect of it, and how it enhances the instructional climate, so that that this is more than just nuts and bolts and roofs and toilets. So it, okay. All right. So we've got in front of us a recommendation by the committee for an athletic facility, and the athletic facility would be at the high school. And there were, this was a lengthy discussion over a number of meetings. And there were a lot of pros and cons, and brought up by our, is she here tonight, our athletic director? Oh, there you are, hi. And, and so, I guess the, I'm going to, again, leave it open to the board for questions. Nancy?
I would just, not a question, but because I sat on, I sat on, on the committee and I was at all the meetings, hearing from not only our athletic director, but also our middle school principal, was very eye-opening to me. And I, I truly believe, because I know it's, it's a very sensitive topic, where do we, where do we do the improvements? And we also felt that, it's not to say that if we decide that we are doing this at the high school and support the decision that the Facilities Committee made, it's not to say that down the road, we're not going to do improvements at the middle school. So that was also something, correct, correct on that? Yes, okay. That we had, we had also, we were very, very emphatic about. I truly believe that this is about looking towards the future. We heard a lot of how to keep our high school athletes at the high school is so supportive of them. When they are bused to the middle school before the middle school is dismissed, it's a very difficult situation for the middle school and also the high school athletes. So I, I think, I mean, I, I have lived in this community for almost 45 years, and so I understand a lot of the, the feelings behind the middle school. However, I really believe that this is our time to look towards the future, to, to allow our high school athletes to do what they need to do at the high school, and then go to their athletic practices, competitions, whatever they're doing there. And I, and I personally would really support this at the high school. I think it's, a lot, a lot of thought went into this. And again, hearing, hearing from the different perspectives was so eye-opening to me, that I, I believe that improving the high school and it would improve parking, it would improve the, the tennis courts was a big discussion point. Tennis courts are already in the original plan, aside from the athletic complex. This gives us what we need, it also improves other fields, puts drainage in, things like that. And I really believe that this is, this is the way to go.
I, I have, I've mentioned this because I'm, I'm interested in this, because I have no particular feeling on where it should be. I just had listened to other people. I went to that one meeting where there were very passionate people as to, it was very passionate, which you usually find in school districts when it comes to sports and, and football fields and everything else. There's a lot of passion, it's very interesting. But the people there were very strong about being at the middle school. And I, I was there to observe, purely, just observe. And one of my questions when I came back, and that's my question to anyone here, Harvey, all of you, is if you, you just explained some of it, but if you could explain to me the thinking, and I'm not doing this for, you know, dog and pony show, I really mean it, I'd like to know the thinking that went behind it, that's the reason it's at the high school. All the, all the pros and cons, I don't mean you have to go through an hour worth of this, but seriously, looking at me and saying, this is why we did this. Because again, I don't want to see a project go down because people don't understand the thought process that went behind it. And one of my other questions were specifically about parking. Now, I believe you had answered, I had asked Terry about this, and he said that there were approximately 500 parking spots at the high school. And I don't, you know, that's important too, because that's a very valid thing that was brought up at that meeting about parking. So take it away, Larry.
Okay. Part of, part of the project is increasing the parking at the high school.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to put Jenna on the spot, if she doesn't mind. I mean, why else would you be here? All right. If you, could you come up and, and grab a mic, please, and, and go over what you had explained to the committee? Sorry, but.
This is just a few of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, looking at this objectively, as somebody who's been in athletics for 40-plus years, and I, unfortunately, I don't have that tie, so I'm not torn one way or the other. My job was to look at what exists and what solves the most problems. Personally, for my opinion as to why it should go to the high school, to answer your question, when you're looking at the field, the field that you would build at the middle school is not the appropriate size for all of the sports. So now you're going to be building, in essence, a better football field that you could also host maybe some modified soccer games on, no lacrosse, any of the outdoor sports. When you're putting, if you built it there, you are now, instead of having five games, because that's what you have, five varsity football games there, and a handful of JV games there, you are now going to move 65 to 70 more games over there. And so now you are transporting students, and in essence, you are not having any type of home games, because now the students have to leave immediately after school, they can't go to after-school help, they can't do any of the conditioning, you don't have a athletic trainer there, he is servicing now the games out of the back of his car, there's no locker room facilities there. When you put it at the high school, you already have four locker rooms, you have a training room, all the students are already there, they're already playing all their games there, you're not disrupting all of those teams to move it to a field that isn't even going to be the appropriate size. So in a quick nutshell, that would be what I observed. And for educational-wise, kids can do all those other things, and they're at the school, and they're going to school, and they're playing at the school where they should be.
Well, you convinced me. Thank you.
Can I, yeah, please. I, I found your argument so persuasive when, because I, I came in thinking like, it's a jump ball, right? And I think one of the, one of the ways that we, it's allowed to be framed, is that, like, we're keeping it at the middle school. But I think what's, what's clear, what's important to understand is, the varsity football team is the only team that uses that, the middle school. So you wouldn't be keeping, you'd be taking the entire athletic program and moving it to the middle school. So I think that the status, the status quo option is not keep it at the middle school, it's improve where the athletic program currently basically happens, improve that facility. And to Nancy's point, there's no one saying that, you know, part of a larger plan, we keep talking about larger plans and, and down the road, that we don't improve the middle school field also. But I think for the committee, it was certainly my feeling, and I think the committee as a whole, if we're going to, with this capital project, make the biggest impact as soon as we can, that is done by improving the, the, the high school facility, because that touches 80 to 85% of the, the student athletes, as opposed to, you know, really focusing on the football element of it.
One, one of the things that I felt is that we got to keep the students in mind. And there's a, there's a pride factor. We have had multiple generations at this point of high school students not having their home football games at the high school. And there's a piece of pride that gets missing there. It had been mentioned over the course of the meetings about the pride that people had in having their, at the old high school, having their football games at that building. And that, it was brought up that they wanted to keep it there because they had that pride. But I think it's time to move on, and it's time to recognize that our high school is where it is. I think if, if in the, in the past, we had had the appropriate funds when the high school was constructed, this would be a moot point. This would have been built at that time. So I, I really believe that keeping the students in mind also, this is their high school, and I think they need that, you know.
That should be first and foremost anyway.
Well, and I, I think that you forget the snowball effect that it has too, is if you start transporting everybody over there, you also have modified programs. So now where are the modifieds going to play? Because right now, you have that, and especially in the spring, and you're transporting high schools to the middle school, and you're transporting middle school people out to the elementary schools. You just keep displacing different levels of people. Instead, this solves those problems. And again, you, you can do work on that field to improve it, and its size is appropriate for some things, but not for all of the other sports.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So Larry, that's, I think, a very thoughtful way of thinking about it. My, my question isn't about location. My question goes to the actual cost. I think the last time we were going to institute turf fields, because that gives more access to, to fields for all the different athletic teams. Lacrosse at the time was, was big, it's getting bigger since then, obviously. I think that number was around $4 million, and that was defeated. This number appears to be 8.4, and it is about 40% of the budget, maybe? Eight of 22, 38, 38%.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, whatever, whatever it is. I know there's a lot of retrofit, such as, you know, expanding the, the footprint in order to make these fields regulation. Not that the football field out there is not, we understand it is, and it was, but now we're talking about expanding it for, for lacrosse and soccer, which had different dimensions of a playing surface, right? But, but that, that, am I, am I thinking about it, if it was at the middle school, it would be 4 million?
No, the middle school was actually, if you take a look at this sheet, the middle school was 8.6.
Okay. So the amount of retrofit is equal, roughly?
There were different, yeah, there were, there were different.
The difference is de minimis.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay. What, 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 and I'm sorry, I, I, you, for those who had to YouTube in. What, 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 and I'm sorry, I, I, you, for those who had to YouTube in, we didn't have the benefits of all the sheets that the committee had, so I don't know what the actual breakdown of what those things were. But, but what's, I know, I know the field itself is probably over 50% of that cost, right? The turf and the like. What, what was the other 50% going to?
Just briefly, I mean, you know, there's so many bits and pieces, but some of the bigger things were in the middle school that you had to put, you had to put in bathrooms and locker rooms. High school, we don't have to do that, because the high school's close enough. You don't have to, you don't have to do that. So that's just a, one small piece. The concession stand, what we've done is changed how we're gonna do a concession stand, one of the ways we kept the costs down. We're gonna do a mobile, and thank you, Jen, did you go back? She brought up that idea. No, you know, sorry, you didn't, I, I just, I just wanted to thank you for, for bringing it up. We could then have a concession stand that can go between the buildings, depending on what we have happening at whatever building it is. So we, you know, so that, that cost, that's one of the reasons.
So, so what would be beneficial, I think, maybe on the, the final thing that we eventually see is an itemize of what those specific items, because right now it's just an aggregate number that we see? Or at least, that's what I'm seeing?
This, if you take, on, yeah, it's an aggregate number, but you have, everything's broken out.
Oh, yeah, but what's the cost associated with those things? That would be helpful for me to, and I think.
We can provide that, that's easy.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because 8.4 is a big number, especially when it was only 4 million last time.
Well, I don't know if it was ever 4 million. I would have to go back and take a look at that. I don't ever remember it being 4 million.
I, you know, I.
I think some, what, what was brought up at one point was just do the field and the lights at the middle school. That might only be 4 million, but you can't just do that. And that's, that's why we then, you can't, we can't keep those existing bleachers. We can't keep the existing press box.
Yeah, no, I thought it was a little bit, the, the 4 million, there was a more comprehensive change associated with that.
Right.
And it included actually the field, which I thought back then was like two or three million bucks. But I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna dwell on the past. I just wanna understand what, what.
Okay.
Where the dollars are going for these various new additions.
I, I.
If that's possible, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we should definitely provide the breakdowns moving forward, I'm sure we will, just to throw in some of, you know, the major costs in addition to the field. You've got the preparation, the site prep, that, you know, the, the earth moving before you even get to the field. You've got a significant amount of money in drainage.
Yeah.
Stands, concessions, or not, press box, fencing, lighting, you know, new track. So all of the, those are the other, you know, major. Right. So.
And also to throw out another little detail, so the drainage improvements at the high school actually has a nice added effect. Currently, the, the baseball field is down, you know, downhill from the football, from where, the, the field. And it takes on, because the drainage was never really done properly up there, that baseball field gets inundated, and is been a, a large contributor to the, the complaints around the baseball field.
The geese love it, though.
Yeah, well, the geese are not gonna like this. So, the drainage is gonna be done now properly at the football field, which the architects, engineers have projected, using whatever means they use to project, that this will solve the drainage problems at the baseball field.
Right, and, and in addition to that, not associated with the, the athletic complex, we're doing additional drainage work down at the lower fields. So that, that is also part of this.
Of the 8.4?
No, the, the lower, the lower fields are having additional drainage work done. Part of the 8.4 is having drainage work done around the football complex, so it won't dump onto the lower fields. So it's a combination of two things happening to the lower fields. We're doing drainage work on the lower fields, and we're doing drainage work at the, around the football area, the area, so that that water doesn't dump down.
I see.
Onto the lower fields. So there's two, two, basically two drainage projects going on. So, uh, 'cause I, I, I've been to many a soccer match at that lower field where you have to wear boots, you know?
Yeah.
And that, that, by the time we're done, that will be a non-problem anymore.
Does, is there any teaching stations that this project adds by any chance?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't.
You know, like, yeah, the athletic portion, is there?
I didn't.
Yeah, is there any, yeah, because I know that state aidable and.
Is there, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of it.
Is there any, is there any way that this will add a, a teaching station?
Well, it, it is a teaching station.
No, no, I, I know it is, but with the improvements, is there any way that we could kind of finesse it that it would?
Well, I, I think that's how the architects are going to describe it to state ed.
As adding teaching stations, is that how?
As an added teaching station.
Now, does that, yeah, so I know we're getting 75% state aid. By having, describing that as a teaching station, will we get more state aid for any of that particular work? That's it, that's the top stop.
It just want pieces of it become eatable.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure. The other, the other, the other thing was, when you're putting down turf, a lot of times people think if you put turf down, you can't put turf down unless you've worked the land underneath and done all the drainage. It's not like you're just putting a, you know, a rug on top of a hardwood floor. You have to do all that. And at some point, to address people's concern about turf itself, because I know there's a lot of people out there that feel this way and that way about it, I think the type of turf that we'll be using, and also the machine that cleans it, people have to, I think it's important that we make people aware, because I've looked into it, that, that the type of turf we're using, and also the machine, and how it does keep it clean, bodily fluids, all of that kind of stuff.
The, the, at one of the meetings that Brendan had, he read a letter of concern.
I was there, yeah.
And one of the things we've done is said, we will not be using any recycled materials.
Mm-hmm, and that's what.
We are only gonna use virgin rubber.
Just so we get the terms right, because I know that there are specific terms. What you're referring to is crumb rubber fill. So it's not, it's not the green part of the, it's not the synthetic grass, it's the fill that is used within it to like make it shock absorbent. So that, the crumb rubber is what is with toxins and all, all the toxicity concerns. At the last facilities meeting, we addressed that specifically, and identified a virgin plastic fill that would, you know, that doesn't have any of the, the toxic, you know.
That's great, because you responded then to the, the person.
Yes.
There were a couple of people at that last meeting that brought that up.
Yes.
And as somebody who's had.
We have addressed that concern, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I have a son who had cancer at, at 19, so I can certainly appreciate all those kind of concerns, and I'm really glad you did that. And I think it's also important to, and this is just, again, explaining how the equipment works. What that, it's like a Zimballee, what, what is that machine that cleans the turf? It, it cleans up bodily fluids and everything?
That's included in the cost here.
No, I see it here. And, and I think that's important that you let people know that that is included in the cost, because that question always comes up too, you know, people are dirty and sweating on the, on the fields. How do you take care of it? So, no, no, thank you, great.
And, and the architect, we, we posed this question, and Tetra Tech, one of their employees at the meeting, one of the facilities meetings addressed it at length.
Okay, great.
So.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm thinking that this has already been taken into consideration, but as we're talking about the new drainage, has that been profiled in such a way to take, take into consideration the changing weather conditions we've had, such that where that drainage is going is sufficient to take it away when everything's backing up? Or, you know, was that discussed?
The answer is yes. They were actually on our property are wetlands, and it would drain down into the existing wetlands.
I'll, I'll add, Larry, I asked the question about our current drainage system at that facility, or at the high school in general. And the high school drainage system has the capacity to handle all the water that would be retained or, or distributed because of the impervious surface that we'd be installing. The, the field itself, the stadium itself, the, the, the loop itself would have its own internal drainage, so the water wouldn't even leave the field itself, and then go into our own, our own detention systems. And we have capacity for that.
So that was modeled for potentially, you know, higher rainfalls, you know, that we've been seeing rise and.
So I can't say that.
The idea, I don't know, that our wetlands, you know, we can't change our wetlands, but backing up and that sort of thing.
They model on averages, you know, rain averages, you, you experience whatever average over the last 24, you know, months or some, you know, that's what they average it off.
Right, but do they project, you know, any increase in that going forward?
I have to, we have to ask Tetra Tech on that, if they project.
I'd like to understand, since we've seen that number rising, that, that we're doing some sort of increase in our, in our funding for that.
Are there any other questions?
I will just add that.
Yeah.
I will just add that Brendan, you know, when, you know, we talk about that, that long-term plan that you're, you're, you referred to, I think it's, I think it's very important that we don't lose sight of the middle school field and its condition that it's in, you know? It's gotta stay on our radar, that it isn't the greatest field right now, and just because we're, you know, potentially moving a field somewhere else, that, that doesn't turn into just, you know, our, our offshoot, and there it just exists. We have to, on your, on that plan that we discussed about the future, the future, the future, the 5 to 10s, that somewhere there is a real number, there's, there's real purpose associated with addressing that field. Now, turf, you know, rehabilitating the, the topsoil that's, I'm sure it hasn't been aerated in, you know, 15 years or some number, but I think it's important that we don't lose sight that, that, that field needs, needs address as well, should, should we, should the high school option be the one we go with.
Louis, that's, that's a really important point of all of this, I think. You know, my experience in youth lacrosse is that fields are at a, at a premium. I mean, you can't find a space. And I've never been a hockey parent, but I, you know, I know parents who get up 5 o'clock in the morning and take their kids to the rink, right, to, to get their ice time in. And if you only have one field and all these different teams, some are playing a game and some are practicing, right? It, it becomes almost like a, an airline scheduling problem in terms of trying to figure it out. And if, if, if we think we're one and done on a, on a one turf field for this district, we gotta think again.
One of the things we, one of the things we discussed was that. That, that set, obviously, the middle school field has to have some work done on it. There's no, no doubt about it. What that work is, is, is still to be determined, and, and what we're willing to, as a district, willing to do. But it does need to be upgraded and does need to be done. We also talked about how we can't do them simultaneously, because what, wherever a, a project goes, the other field is gonna get used.
Right.
And until the project is done and has that field available, then, you know, so the, then the next field can be worked on. But it's gonna be, you know, we can't do both fields at the same time.
Terry, you had brought up about, I don't think we ever finished discussing it, and I, obviously, there's no vote tonight, but just to get an idea and a consensus about breaking down. I mean, I, I don't think we finished that thought about breaking this down into more than one ballot, one notation on the ballot. I mean, personally, I think it should stay as one, and I don't know if anyone else has a different feelings about it, but, that's where, you know, I think that's a much better idea.
Are we segwaying to that point, or are we?
Well, it was brought up before, and then we segwayed into the high school, and I'm segwaying back.
Well.
So, I guess, are we, are we segwaying back, segway, on our way over to?
Unless there's other questions about anything, the scope, location of the field, things of that nature. That's the purpose of tonight.
So, so the, the one thing about the, the, the location, and this is just my opinion, is that as, as much as it makes economic sense because of time and money spent in settling people back and forth, right, that are at the high school but having to go to the middle school to play, or, or, or practice even, I think that decision could be a community decision. And it should be supported by the, 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 the community. And I, I haven't heard at this table, but I, I think I did hear at one of the facility committees a lot of dissension regarding the location of the, of this new multi-sport complex. And so I, I don't know if the vote on this final recommendation to the board was unanimous, but if it wasn't, I'd like to hear what the other side had to say, because I'd like to understand both sides of this discussion, this issue.
If I can just hop in just very briefly, I would never, I don't wanna speak for anybody to just address some of the specifics. It was a, there was one dissenting vote, so however many total people were there minus one, maybe nine to one, 10 to one? So it, it was a very clear majority in favor of the high school. Just to, I, you, you just mentioned there was a lot of dissension. In the end, it was, it was one dissenting vote.
So, so, so I wasn't talking about the, the, the committee's action. I was talking about participants from the audience talking. As I understand, there was a survey, and that survey, I'm sorry?
I never saw the survey, so I don't.
Neither did I.
None of us saw the survey.
It was discussed at the facilities committee.
I understand that, but.
I understand that. It was mentioned at the facilities committee, and I never saw it, and I don't, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. It certainly wasn't an, a comprehensive survey.
There, there was an earlier survey conducted by Jeannie Rose of the coaches, and it was, I wanna say 75%, if memory serves, 75, 80% in favor of, at the high school.
Okay.
And that was shared with us as well as, not just the vote tally, but the, the, you know, free form responses.
Okay. And, and that was the, the coaches, I'm presuming?
Yes.
Right? So they're, they're in favor of this move?
They were in favor of it, and even the coaches that voted for the middle school said, it'd be great to have it either location, my preference is the middle school, but obviously the high school, that would be fantastic to have it.
And I understand one of the committee members was a recent grad who finally articulated why.
Yes.
The high school made the most sense.
Yes.
But there was also my sense in that same meeting that there was mention of some dissension or dissenting views.
Well, there was, there was.
And I'm not exactly who and where they're from, but I, I wanna make sure that, that, that's accorded and heard.
And I'll say, Dave Conright brought up that he felt it would, as, and he was speaking as the, as a village trustee, that he felt moving the football games to the high school, which basically it would happen, those five or so home games that we have, would negatively impact the businesses in the village and the high, and the town. That, that, he brought that up.
So that's, that's, that's interesting. And, and I think you mentioned earlier that, you know, if you fix one field, everyone's gonna have to use the other field, because it's gonna take at least a season.
At least.
Right, so, so, so if it was the middle school, was it discussed where the football would have to move to, to play?
It moved to the high school.
Well, it, that, that was discussed?
No, it was, it's, you know, it was a, a question of what field is left, you know?
But it was discussed, so the pros and cons of why it would be here?
Yes.
If you did the middle school, then it's still going to the, the high school, and that was discussed.
Correct.
Okay, I missed that.
Yeah.
But that's, I think that's important, right?
You know, one, one of the, another, at one point had been brought up, when the high school moved to its new location, it adversely affects some of the restaurants and so on in, in town. What was neglected to say is that back then, we had an open campus at lunchtime that practice wouldn't have continued anyway.
That was actually phased out before.
Before the move.
The move to the present location of the high school.
So the.
Speaking from experience. I was, I was one of the last classes who had an open lunch.
Hey.
So Prima's still in business, because I could walk to Prima's during lunch.
And, you know, I mean, one of my, one of my kids would, would love going to, you know, off-campus and, and came back.
That all changed.
And I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly where. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly where, after they finished their pizza, where the soda bottles and plates landed. I even put a garbage can out because it all landed up on my yard, because it was just at that point they finished eating, just before they got back to the school. So it was-
It's a good side note, Larry.
Yeah. But yeah, so that was, that was one of the, that was one of the negatives that, that was brought up, and, and I'm not, I'm not sure, considering those five games were done at night, when the vast majority of our, our businesses aren't. You know, we have a, a pretty robust concession stand going, and most people don't leave the, the field to go eat anyway. They're eating right there at the concession stand. So, but that, that's my opinion, and that was Dave's opinion. Dave's opinion was that it would affect, have a negative effect on the village and the, and the town businesses. That's one of the things he brought up.
One, one last question on- Sorry, one last question on the high school thing, just, just to, to clarify, the, the drainage in the lower fields?
Yes.
As much as it is tied to the athletic field, it still needs to happen.
It's gonna happen, it's not tied to the athletic field.
Right.
It's on, it's on-
Yeah, no, exactly, it, it needs to happen, and that's why it's not listed in the multi-
Correct.
Sport complex.
That part is not.
Right?
But, but what I was saying is that the drainage that will occur at the sports complex will not negatively impact the lower fields, because it's gonna tie into that drainage and then just go off.
Right. Got it, thanks.
Okay, okay.
We can segue?
What, we're gonna get segwayed?
We're segueing.
Are, are, are we still, are we still discussing one versus two bonds? Is that a decision we're gonna reach this evening? Discussion only. I just, I just wanna weigh in, I, I would like to see us go forward, ideally with one bond, right? What we're doing is for the good of the whole district. My concern runs to the fact that we have a lot of health and safety issues in the buildings that have to get repaired. And I don't really know what the, what all the views are from the voters at this point in time, but I'm concerned that if the athletic facility and its location becomes divisive, that it undermines the other work that we need to do in the schools. So I'm just gonna put that out there because I'd like to see us be successful on the entire bond. But if, if there are portions of the bond that are gonna be more divisive than others, I mean, in this discussion, I didn't hear anything, and maybe there are views in the community, but I didn't hear anything negative about the work that needs to be done in, in the schools and in the buildings and that sort of thing. But on the athletic fields, I'm, I'm hearing that there might be a little bit more division, not on the fact that we need an athletic facility, but where it's placed. And I'm just concerned that if we put everything all together, that people may vote on one issue and we lose the other.
Yeah, I share Nina's concern with that. I think we've, we've been down this road before as a community, and I can tell you as a former derivatives trader that when you ever propose a position that's all or none, be prepared for none. And, and, and sometimes breaking it up in pieces, as much as it's, it's not necessarily preferred, it, in a perfect world, nothing's perfect, then I think it would be an acceptable way forward to ensure that we get support for something as opposed to nothing.
I'm, I'm confused, are you saying two votes or one vote? Because I thought Nina-
Yes, to break it up like Nina said.
So is it a matter of like a two proposition where the first part has to pass? And if the first part passes, then they get, then it goes to the athletic side? Or is it two separate?
I was suggesting two separate propositions.
Two separate propositions, and typically, the second one, such as the football, the athletic field, is contingent on the first one passing.
Okay, yeah, so, all right, super.
So here's, I, I, probably closest to the way Nina described it, my, my preference is to do, is to do one, although I completely recognize the risk of doing that, and I'm not 100% there, I'm not ready to vote tonight on that. I would say, in looking at it through that long-term lens, if we don't get the athletic facility approved this time around, that means it's on the docket the next time around, which is less we get to do the next time around. You know, so we have a certain number of needs in the district, and as I, we, it's just, which side do we wanna bank to, to avoid risk, right? We're gonna have to bank a little bit to one side or the other. And if we go the safe route now and say, we're gonna split it up into two propositions because that guarantees all of this gets passed, well, we might kinda put our athletic facility out on a log and it falls off. And then the next time around, we get to do less of those things that we need to do, which will, some will be, I mean, some of the things that were deferred now are because we, we're getting, you know, upon closer inspection, we can push maybe three or four more years on boilers and stuff, right? That kinda stuff is going to be as, at the most critical stage the next time around. So then we're gonna be in a position where, next time, we're gonna have less room to do more of those critical steps because we took the safe route this time. So if we're viewing this solely as, what's the best way to get all of these passed? Yeah, two propositions, I agree with that. But if we're taking a longer view and saying, what's the best way to get all of this done in the next five years? I think it's one proposition.
So I'll, I'll, I think that's fair, and I respect your opinion on it. I'll, I'll use Warwick as the example that I've been spending a lot of time thinking about myself on. How they went from having a $14 million capital initiative rejected that did not cost the taxpayers anything. What are the numbers on that? 35% was to fix buildings, 9.3 million or 65% of that was to deal with athletic fields. They went back, they regrouped, there was some discussion about whether it was turf fields or grass fields, but the bottom line is, in the end, they increased their building repairs to almost $10 million, reduced their athletic field expenses and incidentals to about $5 million, actually, it was about $4, and it passed. The number of supporters, which is really instructive, I think, as an example, the number of supporters from 19 to 21 only increased by 100 people in terms of yays. The number of nays went away by almost 1,000. So, so what's similar between us and Warwick? Not a lot, I think we're a lot better, like I said before, but I'm not willing to take that chance, at least at this juncture, knowing that the buildings are the most important thing. This is the primary place where kids learn, and the fields, as important as they are, right, the out-of-classroom learning is a secondary thought for me. And if we don't get the buildings right, then everything else fails. So that's why I'm thinking, much like I heard Nina speak, of as much as I'd like to do it with just one, based on our own history, which is 0 for 2 right now, at least in recent memory, I think splitting it would make a lot of sense. But that's my position.
I've seen these things come up a couple of times, and it could also backfire the other way. You could wind up, because we're just thinking about a, a group of people that wanted in the, at the middle school. There's also a very large contingent of sports families in general, soccer, every, everyone else, that will look at this and say, you know what, this is, what do they call it in advertising? That these, the whole athletic field is sexy, the rest is just, oh, pipes and this and that, it's boring. So you could have almost the opposite effect and have somebody support an entire athletic because you have very outspoken parents that are very involved versus other people that may not be as invested in, in structural issues. So it, it, it doesn't always work both ways. Having it as one proposition, what it comes down to is, I think what Brendan said, we're in this position to make some difficult decisions sometimes, that's what we were elected to do. One of the hardest things is knowing that we have buildings that are in very bad shape. The work has to be done, and it's up, I think it's up to the board to say, listen, we're putting this out there at no increase to you, and these are your schools, these are your children in these schools, and we need you to approve everything so that we can make them better, for staffing, for students. I don't think we should leave it up, honestly, to individual groups to decide what to cherry pick. That's just me.
Can I, uh, just, you know, my team is better at this around a lot, and I think a lot of it is try to read into a crystal ball. Just wanted to confirm from Harvey what must be voted on on the 24th and what we might have more time to do some more community forums and get some more information about, because I feel a little uncomfortable, just, we're reading a lot of tea leaves on who's coming out, why they might be upset and things of that nature when trying to make this decision, but could we indeed hold off on the proposition number and some other things? And what, what must be voted on the 24th and what can wait until later?
So the most critical part about this right now is to determine the scope. The location is not as key, we need to know the scope. The reason for that is because legally, there's certain paperwork that has to be done with regards to the CECL application. And next board meeting, we don't need a formal resolution yet, but we need to come to consensus because it's gonna take about 30 days to get that paperwork in place that is required before the board can vote, which would be the second meeting in February. If we don't meet that meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna, we potentially run into some problems having it on the ballot. Now, with regards to the, the one vote or two vote, that is not tied in with CECL, okay? That is simply, follows the same guidelines as the, when the, the resolution that the board has to pass to approve or accept the budget that will be put forth in front of the voters. So that's a 45-day notice before the day of the vote, so we have time on that.
Okay, great. But when it comes to the scope, right, the scope is different depending on whether it winds up in one place or the other, right? The athletic field, I mean.
Generally speaking, it's, it's, it's the same.
Oh, okay.
Dollar-wise.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be tweaks.
So it's dollar-wise, not specifics?
It's gonna be a little tweaks.
But it's the dollar-wise, okay.
But, but certainly, we don't want to prolong this. You, you really wanna lock it in and move forward?
Thought my part was done.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the splitting it, one vote versus two. I think that also ties into the capital reserve, which is an issue we didn't get into. And if, and if you can just refresh Harvey, in the last committee meeting, facilities committee meeting, it was brought up, you know, when do we need to decide on a capital reserve, how much we'd like to ask for? And that was not the same deadline in January, we have more time to decide on that to get on the ballot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's gonna be tied in with the actual proposition and the legal notice. So we do have some time with that. Presumption is that we're gonna be using the whole $5 million. If we split the vote, and part of the vote, part of the project does not pass, we would not necessarily be using the entire reserve at that point.
Right.
Just keep that in mind, because we wouldn't be maximizing it then.
Just thinking about the ballot and trying to read the crystal ball, if you split it to, you know, do an A, you know, and if A, then B, then a capital reserve, how many different factions are we cutting into? How many different options that people can vote? You know, now you're adding, you know, people can vote two, three, four different, five different combinations. So I just think that needs to be discussed. To me, that airs on the side of simplicity of one vote, 22 million, 23 million, you know, 23 million. One vote for that, and then a capital reserve of X dollars to go on to phase two. To me, I think that's better from where I sit now, but like Brendan, I'm willing to, to be convinced otherwise, so.
That's one of my biggest concerns, what Jim just stated. If you can just imagine individuals going into the booth, they're gonna be voting on approximately a $75, $76 million budget. They're gonna be voting on either one or two propositions for a capital project. They would also then presumably be voting on the, say, a $5 million reserve. The problem is, as well as the board.
And three board members.
And, and three board members. So the, the problem with that is that not everybody is, is as in tuned or familiar with the nature of each one of those items. And when they go in there, they can very easily see 76 million, 5 million, 22 million, oh my God, you know, they're, they're spending up a storm here without knowing the real context. So to Jim's point, I, I think we do need to keep it as simple as possible, I think that helps.
I'm, I'm just concerned that in the past, we had one, right, and we haven't gotten there. And I'm very concerned about the condition of the schools.
I don't disagree.
And I don't know, if we don't get that approved, you know, where do we go from there, like when our schools are not safe?
Were there costs, there were costs associated with that?
There was a, there was a tax increase.
That was a-
And this is not a tax increase.
Right, no, no, but I'm putting, I'm putting, I'm putting it aside, right? We're saying it's not a tax increase, but, you know, when we talk about complication, people will walk in there to vote, and they still won't be clear on the fact that that's not, I mean, for all the communications and the mailers and everything, that, that isn't a tax increase. What they'll see is a number. And I'm just concerned that we can't get this done because, you know, I, I don't know, as I say, I haven't heard conversation about someone saying, well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't fix the plumbing, or we should, you know, fix the plumbing in one school versus another school. I haven't heard any of that. But I think from a number of community forums we had, that people are, we had one on facilities two or three years ago, and people are very impassioned about athletics, and I, I think that's fabulous. It's amazing, the commitment that the athletes have, that the families have, that the community has. But I'm concerned because they are so impassioned, that that will drive more divisiveness in terms of the overall proposal.
Question, what's the process for writing the proposition? Do we have any, like, control over what or how it's phrased? Or is that largely-
Yeah, that typically comes from bond council, because legally, you have to word things.
So, okay.
Is that to say that you couldn't change a word here or there as long as they're okay with it? I mean-
So no, to no increase to the-
Yeah.
Added, being the point of no added tax increase, you're thinking that's clearly outside?
I'd have to ask, you know, which certainly-
Because to your point before, I think Nina's making the same point, if it's just numbers, people may look at it like, oh, I'll take, take the 75, but then I'll take the small one because that makes me feel like I'm splitting the baby. And I could see that, that being the psychology of it, but, all right.
I, I think that as we get closer, we can certainly hone in on those decisions. What, just to, something else jumped out at me that I need to share with you that Kate Palumbo, the principal of the middle school, shared with us. And we were trying to figure out how we could, within the scope of what we had money-wise, how could we also improve, improve athletic fields? And so she was willing, and on your big sheet, you'll see that it's crossed off for right now, but it's in this, the future project too, would be the bus loops and changing the configuration. And it's, it sorta makes me chuckle because it was a great idea, but it makes me chuckle because I know how bad that whole situation is. But she felt that improving the athletic facilities that we had were so important that even though this is, this is very important, she felt that it was okay to give that up for right now. And by doing that, it was able to put it to a future project, but allowed us to, to be able to put the improvement of the athletic facilities.
One caveat to that, improve them at the high school because it, she did, she was very emphatic about how it impacts her building when there are games.
Yep, negatively impacts her building and her students, yes, thank you. And the reason why this whole thing sorta made me chuckle is because my mother lives across the street. across the street from the middle school, and inevitably, I end up going there to drop something off for her at dismissal time. And then I don't know why I did that again to myself, but, so, I just, a credit to her in realizing how important that was as well, so that's something. And I think how we market this is just going to be very, very critical to this success Everybody good for now? Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who wishes to pull out an item at this time? Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items two, two, two through four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed, thank you. And we have our second opportunity for recognition of visitors, public comments. We please ask you to come forward, state your name. We would ask that you limit it to three minutes, but the public comment period will have a 30-minute allocation. There's no cross discussion between persons or the board. And I thank you.
All right. Okay, awesome. Hi, I'm Caitlin Nolan, Caitlin Bridget Nolan. I work at Cornwall Central Middle School. I have something super positive to share with everybody. I'd like to share a quote from none other than Betty White. And like her, I share a lot of similarities with her. I also love animals. But also, I'm a big cock-eyed optimist. I try to accentuate the positive as opposed to the negative. I just want to share something great that we're doing at the middle school, starting next week in honor of Ms. Betty White. We are doing a pet drive. So if anybody, excuse me, any board members, community members, Mr. Cashman, anybody, anybody that wants to drop off anything for a local animal shelter, blankets, pillows, towels, toys, anything like that, gently used, I'm sure, or brand new, food, you know, bags of food, cans of food, anytime between the 18th and 22nd. I can do math as an English teacher, I'm very excited about that. So all next week, we are collecting things for animals to donate to a local shelter. Anybody can come to Cornwall Central Middle School and drop it off at the front desk, at the greeter, ring the doorbell, show your ID as usual. And I just wanted to wish our negotiations committee the best of luck tomorrow as they meet with the Board of Education. I hope we can come to an amazing agreement that makes everybody happy and starts the new year off on an amazing note. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. My name's Jackie Keegan. I volunteer with Cornwall Youth Football. I've been a community member all my life, graduated from Cornwall High School. I do have some points of view about the facilities that I've heard, and just to put, you asked questions, and I listened very intently on why you want to move it to the high school. And I'm not against moving football to the high school. However, I do have some concerns. A couple of things that were said, that now is not the time to sharpen a pencil for the budget. I disagree with that vehemently. When I do a home project at Home Depot, before I go to buy stuff, I sit down with flyers and I look, what do I actually need? What am I going to go in there to buy? Because when you get swept up buying things, you can spend more money than you want. You were talking about overages and cost increase. I think we really need to be careful when we're looking at buying things. I know some of the things that were talked about, you know, they were talking about at the middle school, you couldn't use the stands that were in there, and you couldn't use this, and you couldn't use that. I disagree. I don't think we need to scrap everything at the middle school in order to improve what is already there. I don't disagree that we should improve the high school either. I'm not saying one or the other is better, I'm just saying we need to take a better look at it. You mentioned that there was a bathroom at the high school for the football field. Where? Because if you're talking about going into the school, that is a whole nother can of worms that you're opening up with access to a school and security and things like that. We're talking about putting a bathroom, like, we have the porta-potties at the middle school, we're talking about putting a full-time bathroom in there. You would need to install a bathroom at those athletic facilities. You can't have people going into the school. It opens up a safety concern. You guys mentioned 500 parking spots. I would love to see where you came up with that number and walk the school with you for 500 spots, because I know they have a lottery for the kids who park there for seniors. You can't accommodate a senior class, it's only 300 to 400 kids, where are you getting 500 spots? Because you're going to have seniors and a lot more people at the high school, if you're having more athletics at the high school. Where are the visitors going to park? Where is the spectators going to park? Because no one can walk to the high school. You have a, you have a high school that no one has access to. How many people walk to a middle school game? How many people park all over Lee Road and the surrounding areas and walk to the games? You're losing a lot of ability for spectators. Where are the visitors going to come? At our graduation, we have people parking at Mount Airy Park and busing over. Are we going to provide busing for our out-of-town guests and tell them they have to park there and shuttle bus them over to the facility? Because you have to think about that when you're saying that you're going to have all of our athletics at the high school. Where are the people going to be? It is already, in the, at the best of times in the morning, a horrendous in and out of there and a traffic jam. Now add a Friday night's football game attendance to that, with everyone dropping their children off? Right here, when you have a game here, you have kids playing on the playground, you have more room, it's in town, people are able to get their kids. Out there, everybody has to drive. I think you just need to take that into consideration. You're just, I will support whatever decision the board makes. As a Cornwall Football Board member, I will get with everyone, but I just want you to really think about, you have a field right now that is in very poor shape at the middle school. People have gotten injured on it. And if you fix the high school, you're talking about now adding more sports to the middle school. But you're not talking about doing any improvements to fix the safety of the existing things. We have over 300 kids in our youth program that use that field and that track. We have girls on the run that use that field. We have community members walking that track. The stands that are there right now are dangerous. We have people slipping and falling, we have people getting injured. There's bees' nests and situations. Walter Moran does the best job that one could ever hope for. He's, his, him, his staff is so supportive of everything that the community needs, but they don't keep it up the way it needs to be kept up. And I'm just asking the board to consider that it shouldn't be an all or nothing. And I think, from what you guys were saying, that it's going to be, we're going to put all the money at the high school, or we're, I just, I need the board to really think about it. And I'm asking, because, you know, there's petitions going around to improve the middle school, too. Because I don't think you can leave that out and say, oh, we're going to do that soon or next year. Because some basic improvements need to be done to that field before you have varsity, JV, and freshman football, and soccer, and all of the sports, all using that field. And I just, I think that we're also looking at it where we really need to look at, what can we use from the middle school? What can we move? What savings can we make? Because people see athletics and they just say, ah, they're putting everything into football. Or they're putting everything towards soccer. And I, I think we need to almost change it also. I think you need to look at, it's not building facilities versus athletics, it's building facilities versus all the other extracurriculars. Can we call it extracurriculars? There's band, there's chorus, there's drama. I'd rather see some of the money go to new lights for the stage, or whatever the drama kids need, and whatever the band kids need. And I think we just focus it all on athletics, and then, so you have parents who look at, I don't have an athletic kid, and they're like, oh, well, my kid doesn't play sports. What do I need to vote on this yes for? And you're talking about bundling it all together into one vote, and you have people saying, well, I don't go to a football game, I don't care. Or, my kid plays soccer, and you're only talking about football fields. And I just think we need to, like, the communications needs to be, it's not just football, it's not just athletics, it's, these are the extras that we can provide the kids. And I really think we need to, the facilities committee, I would just say, I know you've done a lot of hard work on it, but we need to really look and say, what else can we do? Where can we save money? Can we move this here? Can we, you know, if we put a turf field here, what can we do to change the way the budget is so it makes it a better option for everyone to vote on? Not just football. Because every time people say athletics, they keep saying football right after it. And I don't, like, I love our football team. I've, you know, I've worked very hard with the football, but I don't want it just to be about football. I want it to be, you know, the band and the drama and every aspect of the community, that we use the sports complex for more than just sports, that we can use it for a community. And that's why originally, I was fully prepared to tell you guys, keep it at the middle school. But then I listened to your reasoning, and I said, okay, maybe I can back being at the high school. But I think we can't ignore the middle school facilities also. You have fields at COH that are horrible. And, you know, there, that field, that soccer field, that's used by youth soccer, and you have the Willow Avenue field that's multipurpose for different sports. I think the girls on the run for Willow practice there. That field is not in condition for them to practice. We need to make sure that we're doing a little bit on every field before we put all of our eggs in one basket at the high school. That's basically what I'm saying.
Okay. My name's Tom Keen. Jackie kind of stole my thunder, I thought I was going to hit. I just wanted, I'm the vice president of Cornwall Youth Football, people don't know who I am. I am the proud father of graduating senior, and since there's a bunch of teachers here, I'd like to thank you all for the wonderful education my son had. I don't think you people get recognized enough, and I appreciate you, and my family appreciates you and everything that you do, in case you need to hear it sometimes. I just wanted to let you know that I thought my son had a wonderful education in Cornwall because of all the hard work you people do. I appreciate you. I just wanted to add that, what Jackie said, we have 300 kids on our program. That's a large portion of kids in Cornwall, and how important youth sports are. I don't have, I'm not here for my son, my son's graduating, I'm here for other people's kids, and how important youth sports are to this community. I know, John, you brought it out, that fields are premium here, that we have a tackle and cheer program in the fall, we have flag football in the spring. And what's so wonderful about our flag football program is, at least half the kids in my flag football program don't play tackle football. They play soccer in the fall, they play track, they do other things. And it just gives them a chance to have fun and get exposed to a sport. It's not, it's not complex football, but it's fun. And we use the school field at the middle school, the practice football field, and that's in sorry shape. The game field, too, is in sorry shape, and we've all heard it here, constantly talk about how bad a shape it is. We have to do something. Just vague commitments, maybe we'll do something later. I can't tell my parents that. They come to that field every week, and they see how bad it is, and I keep saying, what are we going to do? Don't our first to eighth graders count? Aren't they student athletes, too? Don't they deserve something? They do. And we need to consider that. And I appreciate all the effort and everything I heard today. I know a lot of thoughts going into this, and I appreciate all the effort. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, were you coming up to speak?
As Mr. Berger can tell you, if he remembers me at all. My name's Lynn Mayo, I'm a French teacher here in Cornwall for 20 years. I just want to say good luck tomorrow for your very important meeting, I hope it goes well. Otherwise, I'm going to have to bring you the three-part series that my three children wrote, and I don't want to do that. So, good luck tomorrow, and let's all go in with positive thoughts and keep the kids in mind. That's all I've got for you. Thank you.
Okay, great. By the way, oh, yeah. My name is Anthony Encano. I believe most of the board members are aware of who I am, and together, we have done a lot of work to emphasize the, to save, for the benefit of the school system. I'm sorry that I learned that you guys are looking at the turf fields only lately. I found that you have a bad communication problem with the community. I found out this two weeks ago by reading the Cornwall Local that you're considering an artificial field for the high school. And two words caught my attention. One was, there is tax, and two, but it is a nice field, nice-looking field. Before Christmas, I sent a request by email for information on the safety of the turf field that you are aware of. And at 3:15 or 3:30 this afternoon, I received an email, a reply, that this, the safety was discussed at the December 21st meeting. I listened to the meeting, and I think safety was talked about, about six, 10 minutes at the most. And the items about safety that was spoken about was the Italian study and New York State Health Department report. Those, that's all the information way before 2008. Your primary job as board or the member of the Cornwall Central School System is not to spend our money. Your primary job is for the safety of the children that we send to the school system. My children came here, and yes, the teachers have done a tremendous job, and thank you because they all went to college and doing very well. Okay? My grandchildren would be, are coming to the school. Now, this is going to take a little bit longer than three minutes. I have worked with polypropylene and polyethylene since 1970. So I am kind of expert on it. I know the material. If you want to feel, if you may, if I may, test this around, this, this is polypropylene, that's the base of the material. It is almost indestructible. If your kids, if the kids' shoes get stuck in this, this will not give, it's the children's ankles, knees, and legs that are going to be harmed. Now, the Italian study that was referred to in the video, it's very old. After that, there was a study done by Ireland, France, Norway, is stopping 30 fields from being used. In 2008, the CDC, EPA, and the Council of Safety Items were supporting artificial turf. Now, in 2015, they backed all- Now, in 2015, they backed away from that. That is the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency. You want to, you, there is a mountain of research you can dig up. This is one day's work. I heard also that you're not going to use chrome tires because of the problems associated with all the different chemicals. Well, virgin carbon has the same amount of chemicals, ninety-two, sixteen of which are carcinogens. Virgin carbon tire contains the same carbon nano tubes. Anyone knows what's that? Carbon nano tubes. You shut down the high, the school in the village because you had to remove asbestos, right? Asbestos, carbon nano particles are, are the thickness of ten thousand over here. They are one inch compared to four hundred and twenty miles. That's more, when the rubber crumbles, you can't even see it, our kids will be breathing That's what's causing cancer. It is associated with asbestos. You need to rethink this. As far as, there's a lot of letters from, I don't have the time to read it. To all the coaches, you need to Google Amy Griffin, Amy Griffin, a soccer coach at the University of Washington. She's the one that started this in 2008. She kept a list of the soccer goalies that got cancer after college. Today, there is two hundred and thirty kids on her list. You need to do your research. I know before, I gave you a lot of information, a legacy ridge, and together, the board made the right decision. I just don't have the time now. I've worked for a lot of companies, I'm home with a very, I have very little time home. I like to spend it with my grandchildren, to tell you the truth. But you need to rethink this, as the safety of our kids, there's going to be thousands and thousands of children that's going to be playing on that field. You have placed all your eggs in one basket. You should go back to the natural field, all the safety expert, there's a lot of studies that are coming out, and you need to read and research it. I think we can go out all night, but I close, your primary mission is the safety of the children that the parents and grandparents are sending to the school. Thank you very much, and stay safe.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the meeting now. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you all for coming tonight.